All right. Good evening, everybody. The study session of February twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two is called to order. Donna, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
And Councilmember Bowe.
Here.
All right. Tonight, we're going to discuss annexation. The city attorney Kathleen Haggard has information for us. Good evening, Kathleen.
Hey, everybody. I haven't been here for a while, and nice to see everybody again, and I see a couple new faces, too. So can everyone hear me okay? Okay, great. And, you know, despite two years of COVID, I have never once shared my screen on Zoom in a presentation. I don't know how I've managed to avoid it, but I haven't done it. So Donna was kind enough to walk me through the process this morning, and let's just hope that everything goes okay. All right, did that work?
Yep.
All right.
Yep, there we go.
Um, so let's go from the beginning. All right, so I was asked to be here to talk to you guys because I understand that you're going to be considering an annexation pretty soon. You got a notice of intent submitted, and it'll be before you before too much longer. And it's not something that you have done. In fact, aside from one fairly straightforward, small annexation, I don't think I've seen annexations in Shelton since I started this job in two thousand and seven. So just not a city that's that's expanded its boundaries very rapidly, unlike some other cities in the state. So it makes sense, since it's a kind of new to all of us, to walk through the the process. And annexations are, you know, they're very old. If you look at the state laws that authorize annexations, a lot of them date to the nineteen forty's. There's some newer laws as well, but it's a fairly old and antiquated process in many ways. It's been tweaked over the the decades. And basically, it's a way for an existing city to expand its territorial boundaries and bring in new territory. Annexations can really be monumental things. To give you an example, in nineteen ninety-seven, the city of Vancouver doubled its population overnight through a single annexation. And now is the fourth largest city in the state of Washington. And at the time, that was the largest annexation in Washington State history, and it may still be to this day. Now, obviously, what you're looking at isn't quite that monumental, but it will still have impacts, and it still has a process that you need to go through. So tonight, I want to focus on the process for annexations and also talk about some of the impacts of annexations. So first, let's start with a little quiz. Why annex? A, because it's your destiny. B, to augment the tax base. C, for efficient city services. D, because a property owner wants in. Or E, all of the above. Does anyone want to volunteer an answer?
E.
E, absolutely, all of the above. All of these are really good reasons to annex property. And I want to go through them one by one, starting with B, because A is really special, and I want to leave it till the end. That talk about the tax base for a minute. If you have adjacent territory with a good established tax base or a good potential tax base, that's an excellent reason to bring them into the city for obvious reasons. Is anyone familiar with the South Hill area adjacent to Puyallup? So it's all pavement and stoplights and retail and restaurants, and there's a cash register every twenty-five feet. And one would think that would be a city, but it's actually not. It's still on the county. And rumor has it that the county doesn't want to let it go because of the tax revenue it generates. And item C, efficient city services, that presents itself in a couple of ways. For example, if you have an area that you're already serving with water and sewer and stormwater, potentially other city services. Those residents are getting the service, but they don't have the opportunity to vote for the people who set the rates, which, as you know, is the city council. And then there's the flip side, where you could have a territory that's adjacent to your city limits, that's developing without water and sewer, on wells and septic, and for environmental reasons, that's just not a good idea. So you want to be able to bring them in so that you can compel them to use water and sewer service. Item D, because a property owner wants in, that's what you'll be looking at shortly when the notice of intent comes before you, is these are property owners that decided they wanted to be annexed into the city. They're in the urban growth area. It's perfectly acceptable for annexation, and the property owners want to make it happen. So that leaves us with A, which is it's your destiny. And if you want to take a minute and read this quote for a second, it's from MRSC. So as you can see at the end, the question is not so much if you will annex, but whether you're or when you're going to annex. And that's because you're in a Growth Management Act county. The Growth Management Act is a law from nineteen ninety that has at its heart a goal for environmental preservation in a really broad sense. And how it does that primarily is it seeks to concentrate human populations into cities and leave the rural areas for agricultural resource lands and natural areas. And really, that's one of the best things we can do to protect the earth, is to follow that development pattern rather than allowing, you know, the entire face of our state to be kind of paved over with sprawling development. And so that's what annexations really do is, under the Growth Management Act, urban areas, urban growth areas and areas that already have urban-style development like South Hill are destined to be cities, either by separately incorporating or becoming annexed into an adjacent city. Let's talk about how annexations happen for a minute. And there are six methods available to Shelton. There are actually seven, but one of them is so obscure, I just left it off the list because I don't think you're ever going to see it. And I'll I'll eat my words if we ever do, but I don't think it's going to be an issue. The methods are sixty percent petition, alternative petition, election, unincorporated islands, municipal purposes, and interlocal agreement. So we'll go through those one by one, but I want to focus primarily on the first one, because that's what you're going to have in front of you. So you have two petition methods in Washington State, and there's a very strange reason for this. So originally, there was only the one on the left, which is the sixty percent method. And then about twenty years ago, the Washington State Supreme Court declared that method unconstitutional. And the reason it did is because you see the words assessed value over in that left-hand column. That this means that annexations were primarily controlled by whoever held the most high-value property in an area and really didn't have any approval by the voters or approval by the general population. So if I'm in the county and I have my little plot of land, and I'm next to an extremely high-value property that wants to be annexed, they can essentially drag me in against my will because they own, you know, sixty percent or more of the assessed valuation. And the State Supreme Court about twenty years ago found that to be unconstitutional because it disenfranchised the general population and put too much weight on property owners. And so while that was unconstitutional, the legislature adopted this alternative method. And as you can see, there's no mention of assessed value. It goes by land area instead, regardless of the value. And it also requires ultimate approval by a majority of registered voters in the area. So that kind of took care of both problems that the court found. But then shortly after the legislature adopted this second method, the Supreme Court reversed itself and decided that the original method was constitutional after all. So now you have two methods, and I frankly have only seen the sixty percent method used. I haven't ever seen the alternative method used. It probably is used. It's just in my experience, it's a little more complicated. And there was a reason that the legislature originally opted for this first method. So let's talk about it in more depth, because again, that's the one that's going to be in front of you. Here's the process. So you get a notice of intent, and that notice of intent has to be signed by ten percent of the assessed valuation owners of. And your petition that you're going to be seeing, I believe, is signed by a hundred percent. So you're definitely more than ten. And within sixty days of receiving that petition, you, as a council, need to meet with the petitioners. And that means, obviously, an open public meeting, because you can't meet behind closed doors. And you need to decide whether you're going to accept the notice of intent. And if you accept it, that doesn't mean you're approving the annexation. All that means is you're allowing it to keep moving forward. And there's no particular form that you have to use for your acceptance. If you decide to go with it, we'll write you up a resolution, because it's probably the best, most clear way to do it. You also need to decide whether you're going to require the newly annexed territory to assume your indebtedness. That essentially means that whoever lives there or owns taxable property there, however this is set up, would have to start paying their fair share toward a debt the city has assumed. When I was chatting with Mark and Jason about this, we thought you don't have any debt that would be assumed by the new territory, but you'll want to clarify that before this comes before you. So then, once you approve it, assuming you do, then these property owners need to circulate a petition. And they have to get signatures from at least the owners of the owners of at least sixty percent of the assessed valuation. And again, it sounds like you're going to get a hundred percent, so it's not going to be an issue. Then that petition gets sent to the county assessor to make sure that you have enough signatures and the signatures are valid. Then you give formal notice, and you set a public hearing, and the statute has special requirements for notice that I've brought to Jason's attention already, so he's aware of that. You conduct a public hearing, and then you decide, make a final decision, do we want to annex this territory or not? And if you do, it has to be by ordinance. The ordinance takes effect on the date that you state it takes effect, and the territory is essentially yours. I have this question here at the end. Is an annexation review board necessary? So if you read the statutes, they talk about something called an annexation review board, and there's this other thing they talk about called a boundary review board. A boundary review board doesn't exist in Mason County. It, you're not large enough by population to require you to establish one. The only county in the state that I'm aware of that still has a boundary review board is Pierce County. And I've been there, and believe me, it is not a place you ever want to be if you can avoid it. It's an established body of judicial officers, essentially, that hold this tremendous power over your annexations. Mason County doesn't have that, but there are some references in the state law to annexation review boards. And that isn't an existing body like a boundary review board. What it is, is this, it's an ad hoc committee that the city just throws together, and it's not even really clear what they do. So even though the statute mentions this, there is a case that finds that the annexation review board for the sixty percent petition method is not necessary. The legislature didn't change the law in response to that case, so we've kind of got two authorities. But I think in a situation where you have a hundred percent buy-in by the property owners, you have vacant undeveloped property, it should be relatively uncontroversial annexation. You don't need to do an annexation review board. Let's go with what the court said. So the next method is the election method, and I want to go through this fairly quickly because I've frankly never seen it done. It's kind of a nightmare if you look at all these steps. So the petition comes, at least twenty percent of the votes cast in the annexation area in the last election. That goes to the county to determine if there are enough signatures. Then it goes to the city council for a review. Then you actually do have to do an ad hoc annexation review hearing. Then it goes to the county commission for its review. Then it goes to an election. And the vote has to pass by majority vote, but if you are requiring assumption of indebtedness, that has to pass by a supermajority, which is sixty percent. So like I said, kind of a nightmare. Don't recommend that you ever do this. The next method is unincorporated islands. And essentially, what that means is you've got some residential property that's essentially surrounded by the city, mostly eighty percent at least of the boundaries are contiguous. And it's in the same county and the UGA as a city. And it's really simple. The city council just passes a resolution seeking annexation. You do notice, public hearing, and you pass an ordinance. Really easy. The hitch is it's subject to referendum, meaning that within forty-five days, anyone in the annexation area can file for an election to have the decision reversed. The next method is municipal purposes. And what that is, is you've got an asset somewhere else, not in the city, and you want to bring it into the city so that you just have more control. Water reservoir, a water tank, a park, a sewer treatment plant, those sorts of facilities. And this is very easy. It doesn't even have to be contiguous, doesn't even have to be in the UGA. You just pass an ordinance declaring that this property is for municipal purposes, and your your annexation is done. This can lead to controversy depending on the facts. So twenty-five years ago or so, I'm guessing on the date, there was some property in unincorporated King County outside of anyone's urban growth area. And one of the cities, I can't remember which one, annexed it and claimed that it was going to be used for municipal purposes. And probably at the time, they meant it. But then a few years later, they turned around and sold it to a developer, and then the developer wanted to put houses on it. So now you have a situation where you have land that was never intended to be urban in nature, that's been kind of hauled into the city and then used for urban purpose. And I guess that was okay. It got taken to the Growth Management hearings board and everything, and it was upheld, but it just, it didn't sit right when I heard about that. Finally, there's the interlocal agreement method. And in counties larger than yourself, they have just a sort of general all-purpose interlocal agreement method. You only have it when you have fire districts involved. So what the law says is, if you're annexing into territory that's served by a fire district, you can start this three-way negotiation with the city, the county, and the fire district. And you just sit down and you talk logistics, and there's a whole list of factors that you should be discussing in the course of this, how services are going to be provided, whether there will be any compensation going to a fire district that loses territory, or vice versa, the other way around. Whether any employees in a fire district that's kind of put out of business will be employed by the city that's annexing, all those sorts of logistics. And then if the interlocal agreement is signed by all three or just the city and the county, the fire district doesn't even have to sign on. Then you pass an ordinance approving the annexation. And as with unincorporated islands, this one is also subject to referendum. So that does it for the methods of annexation. And to close out here, I just want to talk about some of the extenuating circumstances and factors that you want to consider when annexing. And I'll start by saying that in the annexation that you'll be considering, a lot of this stuff is not a big deal, or isn't even going to be on the table, because you've got vacant property, you've got a hundred percent buy-in by property owners. It's not going to be as super complicated. It's not City of Vancouver doubling its population overnight, kind of complicated. But still things to think about. The first thing is whether you have any agreements on file with property owners where they waived their right to protest annexation. Our municipal code requires this when we extend water and sewer service into the urban growth area outside of our boundaries. If if I'm in the county and I want city water, then I have to sign this agreement that gives the city the right to approve an annexation on my behalf. So the city gets to count as my percentage of assessed valuation when that petition gets filed, essentially. And so it's always good to look and see if you have any of those on file, because if you collect enough of them, you might be done. The next thing to consider is fire service, which we already talked a little bit about. From what I've heard from Mark and Jason, it doesn't sound like fire service in this case will be super complicated to sort out, again, because it is undeveloped property. I believe it's served by a different fire district than the one you contract with, though. So you are going to have to negotiate that somehow. The next consideration is garbage service, which can be pretty complicated as well. So most areas outside of cities aren't served by contracted haulers. So City of Shelton contracts with a garbage hauler. You used to have your own trucks, and now you contract. Out in the county, what's most likely the case is there's no contract. If garbage is getting picked up, it's because the hauler has permission from the Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission, which is a state agency. They get what's called the G certificate, and they get the right to serve a certain amount of territory. And so if you annex into that territory, that cancels their G certificate. But the haulers went to the state legislature and argued for a seven-year amortization period, essentially. So you annex into their territory, it cancels their G certificate, but they still get a right to another seven-year right to serve the territory, essentially. There's ways to negotiate around that, but that's the default setting. The next factor is pre-annexation zoning, just making sure that the zoning is set up for the territory that you're going to be annexing, and it's not something wildly different than you want it to be. If it's been in the county and it's zoned, you know, kind of how you want it already, you probably have a little time to to figure out, especially if the property is is undeveloped. But in cases where you don't have that time, there is a process for setting up the zoning before you do the annexation. And so the zoning automatically takes effect when the annexation takes effect. And that requires two public hearings thirty days apart. From what I've been told, I don't think you'll have to do that here because the zoning is compatible enough to how you want it. The next factor is an annexation public relations program. Again, not going to be an issue here because all the property owners want in. I mean, you still may want to do some PR just for the broader community and for the city residents, just so everyone knows what's going on. But with large annexations of already developed property, cities do pretty large-scale annexation programs where they really try to educate the public, hold town halls, really sort of explain why it's a good idea to annex and what's going to happen after annexation occurs. You know, sometimes you can get into situations where people will come to the council meetings, and they'll say they don't want to be annexed. I've seen long lines of people coming to city council meetings, saying they don't want to be annexed. And, you know, some of that is lack of understanding about what it means. So people will say, well, I don't want my water rates to increase. Well, you're already a city water customer, so your rates aren't going to increase. So correcting some of those assumptions can be really helpful. Claiming that, you know, they won't get as good of services, when the reality is, they're probably, you know, they may get better services, certainly, economy of scale with police services and other types of programs. And then lastly, is there a possibility for referendum? Just making sure that you understand that some of those methods that we talked about do allow the voters a chance to essentially recall the city's decision and being prepared for that. So that is it. And with that, if there are any questions, please let me know.
I don't see any hands up. Great presentation.
Thanks.
Does anybody have any questions? Oh, Sharon, Councilmember Sherman has a question.
I do have a question, and this is like way down the road hypothetical. So let's say this party is annexed, and then it's developed, and let's say thirty years down the road, they no longer want to be annexed in the city of Shelton, and they want to apply to become their own city. Are they allowed to do that?
You know, I don't believe that they are. Simply because, you know, they've they've been annexed, and they're they're part of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Schmidt?
Yeah, I had some questions on your examples related to garbage and fire service. So I'm thankful that our two fire chiefs local to us are on the meeting tonight, so we're all going to be on the same page, hopefully, here. As I understand it, you know, the city, as through the city's ILA with the fire district, you know, we we pay a flat rate each month for those services, and, you know, the county residents pay a cost per thousand in the county for fire services. If we were to annex an area in the county that is in the UGA that is currently paying into like Fire District eleven through their property taxes, how would that then work? I'm assuming we would have to look at the ILA between Central Mason and in the city in that case, but do they automatically become a customer, if you will, of the city, like the city's process? And what are their chances of changing that or, you know, contesting that?
Yeah, they wouldn't automatically be come served under the city's contract. There's a negotiation that has to happen. There's actually a really detailed statutory process for the negotiation. And different processes apply based on how much of a fire district's territory is being assumed by an annexation. So it's, it'd be a little tricky to give you all of So it's, um, it'd be a little tricky to give you all of those details here tonight. Um, but what I can say is it's, it's essentially a negotiation with a lot of details that have to be worked out between. Um, the city, it's, it's Mason five, I believe you have the contract with. And then Mason eleven, which would, um, its territory would be coming into the city via this annexation. And that's why the legislature set up this interlocal agreement process. Which you don't have to use it, you can go ahead with your sixty percent petition method. Um, but the legislature found that cities were running into this issue all the time. Where they would annex territory and they would kick out a fire district or take fire district territory. And then there would be this huge list of issues that had to be worked out, so. Um, that's why uh the, the legislature set up this process where you have the three parties sit down and talk about it and work it out. But regardless, even if you don't use that method, you go ahead with the sixty percent petition, you have to work out the same issues.
Got it, got it. So there's a negotiation with the taxing district at that point that we would have to. We'd have to work out and facilitate that discussion, which is good. So we're all on the same page there, this, that's a good opportunity for us to talk, and then I had a second question, it's similar related to the trash service component. Um, you know, trash is a compulsory service in the city, not in the county, and then if we make. You know, we annex a certain territory, um that then. Automatically would become a compulsory service for those annex, right? And then they would be essentially. Forced into Mason County garbage as their provider.
Is Mason County garbage your contract? Um, does anyone know who, who is serving the annexation area right now? Is there a hauler that has a G certificate there?
Uh, I am not sure about the G certificate, but I uh do know that the entire area that uh we will be talking about in the future is undeveloped. So there are.
Oh, it'd be new, it'd be new territory for everybody, that's right.
Yeah, so.
Well, there's probably still a hauler that has the right to serve that area if it does get developed.
It's the same hauler in both county and the city. They both, we both use Mason County garbage.
Okay.
And I believe that our contract uh was built for growth, wasn't it Jeff?
There are uh components to it, but uh this is uh any annexation that we're talking about. Um, whether it's the one we have our uh, our ten percent intent or anything else. Uh, the density would be at urban level densities, uh city level densities rather than county level where you're talking about one house for every five acres. Um, generally or larger. Uh, so the scale of that is going to be uh completely different. Um, assuming, you know, when it gets all built out, these things don't happen. Uh, in five years when you're talking about that much land, it's, it's a multi-year process, sometimes decade process.
Yeah, it sounds like you've got a lot of time to work on the garbage issue, and if it is the same hauler that you contract with. It sounds like it'll be an easy negotiation, they'll likely just agree to take over the area, and when, and if it does develop. Um, and then, you know, assuming you're still contracted with that same hauler when development occurs. Now, that's, that's who their provider will be.
Fifteen more years.
Thank you Kathleen, that answered my questions.
Any other hands up? No other questions for Kathleen? Or uh City Manager Knighton, any questions for him?
Well, my question is just in general, are, are we, the annexation area, are we talking the port?
No.
Oh, okay, that's what I, because um. You know, we're already in, we have Fire District eleven for fire service, and we use Mason County garbage for garbage service. Oh, I, I just don't, the area you're discussing is not considering the port?
No, it is not, uh and that's why the presentation tonight was pretty general, um just about different annexation methods. Uh, we have uh some interest from property owners on the opposite side of the city. Uh, that will be considered fully in a public process um in a few months, I would imagine.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, if nobody has any more questions for Kathleen, uh do we have any other items for new discussion? If we don't, we can adjourn this meeting or study session at six thirty-five PM.
Thank you.